Northern Michigan Child Assessment Center, Rebecca.
Can you turn your mic on?
Green. Well, good morning, everyone. Just wanted to give an annual update in regards to the Children's Assessment Center. And I guess first and foremost, thanks again for the nomination for Co-Person of the Year. I've gotten a lot of great feedback and a nice article in the paper. Thanks, Krista. So just with that, kind of my theme this year, talking to all my counties and talking to the commissioners in the community is we need to remember that abuse happens more than we know. And, you know, we deal primarily at the Children's Assessment Center, kids that are being sexually abused is like 80% of our cases. And so I think we just have to really keep that in the forefront of how important these services are because we're just starting to touch the surface. We are getting ready to celebrate this year, nine years, at the Children's Assessment Center, so we still have a lot of work to do. Out of that, we know one out of 10 children, statistically speaking, will be sexually abused by the time they're 18. Sadly, only about 30% of those kids are going to disclose while they're a child. So there's a lot of kids out there, too, that we need to make sure that we are supporting and continuing to support, that they talk about their abuse so we can get them the help that they need. Because we know if we do get kids the help that they need when they're being abused, the chances that they're going to get or grow up to be healthy adults are, you know, chances increase. The kids that aren't getting the help are the kids that we're seeing, delinquent, kids that are depressed, kids that are suicidal, they're having difficulty in schools, our teenage pregnancies. And then a lot of times also the kids that we're seeing involved in our juvenile court system. So if we can get the kids the help that they need when they need the help, it's going to prevent so much of those kids having difficulties into their adulthood. So keeping that at the forefront, that these services are so important, that we can reach these kids and get them the help that they need. And the help that they need, our services at the Children's Assessment Center. So what we do is we are a place where kids can be heard. We have a staff of 11, full-time staff now, and on-call staff. So kids come to the center to be interviewed when they're disclosing or when there's concerns that they've been abused or neglected. They're interviewed by trained forensic interviewers who are trained by the state of Michigan to make sure that we're interviewing these kids in a way that's developmentally age-appropriate, that it's not leading, not suggestive, or following a protocol, that we're making sure we're getting the most accurate information from kids. Because just as much, I mean, I'm married, I have a husband and a son, and just as much as we want to hold offenders accountable, the last thing we want to do is accuse somebody of abusing the child who's not. So we want to make sure and ensure that these interviews are conducted in a way that we're going to get that accurate information from kids. So after that interview, though, we want to make sure that the center is also a place where kids can be healed. Law enforcement and protective services goes out, they conduct their investigation, they are ensuring, you know, that if prosecution needs to happen, they're working with our prosecutors. Protective services is ensuring that kids are safe. But we want to make sure that the kids get the support that they need. So I have two full-time advocates and then three full-time interviewer or therapist. And with the American Rescue Plan funds that we got from Roscommon County, one of those therapists is strictly designated to provide services to Roscommon County. And not only for kids that are coming through the center, but just kids that are also struggling just because of the pandemic that's happened, you know. You know, these kids being isolated and having school problems and struggling now in school after being homeschooled for two years. And so we have a therapist that's really doing some outreach and connecting with those families and working with our schools to make sure that those families are getting the help that they need. So, you know, at the center, we want to make sure that kids are heard, we want to make sure that kids are healed, and then we also work together as a team. And that team approach is so important. And when I look at what does that mean, a team, there are several levels of a team. I have a team of staff, and our staff works together to investigate these cases. We have a team, our multi-disciplinary team, which is our MDT, you'll often hear in the CAC world. MDT is working with our law enforcement, our prosecutors, our children's protective services. So we are together as a team, making sure that these needs are being met. And also, we are a team as a community. It takes the community to work together as a team to live in a community where kids are safe from abuse. And I'm able to hire the staff, I'm able to provide the services, I'm able to, you know, put that team together. But I can't do that without the community team. And it takes the community to make all these services work. So I so appreciate the support that we've gotten from the commissioners over these past eight years, looking forward to that partnership in the future to continue. Looking at what we've done, I did throw some stats together just for the last few years so we can look at how we are progressing from the pandemic. From '21 to '22, we're pretty much back up to where we were before the pandemic. You know, things in '20 shut down, we received 114 referrals, which was down. CPS, doctors, kids weren't out in the community, you know, around people that, you know, were mandated reporters, so our numbers went down. '21, we're back up, we saw 175 referrals come through the center. And that's more than two kids a week, you know, coming through the center, being interviewed as a result of concerns of child abuse and neglect. And advocacy, you'll see, all those families that come through receive advocacy services. So those are families, those non-offending family members who have an advocate, who they can sit and talk to and ensure that they're getting the help that they need. Sadly, the reason that they're at the center might be sexual abuse or physical abuse or witness to a crime, that's probably only one issue that this family is dealing with. There might be domestic violence, or might be drug, alcohol use, just a single parent struggling with childcare. And so our advocates are really there to help support these families. I had an advocate making phone calls to find a rental for a mom who was getting out of a domestic violence shelter, didn't have a place to stay. She spent like two weeks of her time calling around, talking to realtors, getting this family into a house. So the advocates are there to really support the families in whatever their needs are. We offer after that exam, medicals and mental health services. So if a child needs a medical exam, twelve of those kids that were disclosing abuse reached that level that they needed, a very specialized medical exam. So Dr. McMarrel works for Michigan, we partner with them, she comes to the center every Friday and does those exams for us. We also have nurses and advocates that are on-call 24/7 to respond to any sexual assault or sexual abuse when it happens within 120-hour timeframe. Our nurses are trained to do that evidence collection. So no longer do those women and children and men, if they've been sexually assaulted, have to go to the emergency room. They can come to the center, have that exam done, and have the evidence collected at that time. And then with our therapists, our therapists are providing services both here and in Towas. We have a satellite office in Towas. So one of our therapists is up there two days a week, providing services, and then we have two full-time therapists here, providing services, and these kids are then getting the mental health services that they need. Luckily, with the support that we get from our federal funds, which covers about 60% of our budget, and then our state funds, and then between fundraising, nonprofit, and like I said, it's that community, a team that makes these services happen. And so those kids then continuing to provide the services and getting them the help that they need is going to ensure that we can help these kids. And then with that, holding offenders accountable. So just last year, we did, we were able to prosecute eight of our cases where those offenders were held accountable, and they're no longer out there abusing other kids or abusing the victim that they had. We know we're two years behind, the court shut down, and that has affected our funding also. Our federal funds are Victims of a Crime Act, which are fines and fees that come through on the federal level. And without the courts running for the last two years, we're not sure what our '23, '24 budget is even going to look like with all of those bulk of funds. So any support as commissioners, and, you know, we're reaching out to our legislators. We do have a lobbyist that works for our CAC of Michigan, who's also talking to our legislators about getting better support in our general fund from the state of Michigan. Right now, we're getting $2 million in the general fund to cover 40 CACs, so that's divided. My allocation's about $40,000 from the state of Michigan. So that's an area that we really need to advocate, we really need to talk to legislators, make sure all of our new legislators are aware of the services that we provide at the Children's Advocacy Center, and continue to advocate and lobby that we can, you know, increase our general funds to help CACs. Our goal as a chapter of Michigan is that every child in the state of Michigan will have access to a Children's Assessment Center by 2025. The UP is getting better. I cover six counties now, I took on Adsego, I'm getting great support from the commissioners in Adsego. But we still have a few counties out there that are struggling to provide CAC services. And so luckily, when I go and talk to other executive directors, I'm able to say what the support that I have from our commissioners has made us so successful. And so I appreciate that. Overall, since we started, just to put some other things into perspective, you know, covering, you know, we started with the four counties, we expanded into Iasko, and now we just expanded into Adsego. So now with the six counties, and obviously those numbers change as we cover more services, but overall, we were able to prosecute 221 kids, or offenders, sorry about that, 221 offenders that were prosecuted as a result of the services that we are providing at the center, on making our communities better, safer, and keeping our kids safe. So I'm here, just wanted to give you an update that we are still plugging away. And again, with the commissioner's support, we will be expanding our center, so we are all excited about that. So a little update, I am working with an architect right now to look at the detention center and how we can reconstruct the detention center to make it a little bit more child-friendly and move services over to the center. So our vision right now is that we'll utilize the detention center for our investigative services. So that's where our forensic interviews will take place, that will be able to increase our interviews. We have two full-time interviewers and one interview room. So be able to expand that, to have two interview rooms, so we can get these kids in in a more timely manner, they won't have to wait for a forensic interview. And then we'll be able to expand our First Step program. So our First Step program is our nurses that are on-call 24/7. So right now, everybody's sharing that medical area. So we have adults that might come in for a stay-in exam while we have a waiting room full of kids that are there for counseling. So that will give some privacy to our adults who are coming in for stay-in exams. It'll give us great office space, and then the space that we are in now, we'll be able to expand our mental health services. So we're targeted to hire another therapist with our ARP funds. And so with that expansion, we can get that therapist going, and that parent therapist can provide more services to our families in Roscommon County. We know, when you look at the population and the number of people that we have in Roscommon County and the number of therapists we have, it's so underserved that we need more counseling services. So we are targeting to have space for five full-time therapists that will all just be there to provide those trauma services. So, you know, we want to just live in a community where we can ensure that anybody who has experienced trauma, no matter what that trauma is, has the services available. So that is our '23 project, we'll be working at the detention center and getting that in a child-induced manner to be able to provide services for our families.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Turn your mic on.
The Board of Commissioners has always been very supportive and always had your back in regard to any issues. My recommendation would be sometime during the year, with the chairman and the controller, maybe for a walkthrough for the Board of Commissioners, I think we've got three, and I truly believe you'll always have the full support of the board.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
EDC, Brenda. Sure.
I wanted to come before the Board of Commissioners this morning and really formally introduce myself and my role here in Roscommon County. I'm joined with Catherine Muthner, she's our EDC board chair, and I also have my executive committee, Rich Castle and Teresa Acton with me today. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about my history here in Roscommon County and my role with Michigan Works. So I've been with Michigan Works, I think I just had my 14-year anniversary, the end of last month, the bulk of that time I've spent here in Roscommon County, mostly working in the business services role. So I work with the employers in the county, assessing their needs, whether they're expanding or laying off new businesses, really growing and retaining those businesses, and then, of course, work with our service center staff. So for those of you that are aware of Michigan Works, there's several different Michigan Works agencies throughout the state of Michigan. We're not a state office, we are contracted. So my employer record is Region 7B Consortium out of Harrison, Michigan. We cover six counties, Eernet, Clare, Gladwin, Iasko, Ogumon, Roscommon. In each of those counties, there's someone in that business services role, and that's that role that I've been in for many, many years. A few years back, when Rosalie, the previous EDC director, retired, I was on Rosalie's board, and like many other counties that we provide services in, we went into an agreement with the county to provide economic development services as well. So this morning, we really want to talk about that relationship. In your packets, I've included a 2022 year in review on those activities that the EDC has worked on in the last year. And then also Catherine's going to talk a little bit about that memorandum of understanding. As you're aware, you know, with the Restoration Millage didn't pass, the EDC was one of those services that were cut here in Roscommon County. So back in November, the commissioners made a motion to discontinue that allocation for economic development services. So currently, we are working with Mark Burdan, he's the executive director of Michigan Works, Region 7B. And we also have a 501(c)(3) called Northern Transformation Corporation. That was established probably 13, 14 years ago, kind of right around my time when I started working in the business services role. And that 501(c)(3) was really established as a funding mechanism to, you know, do outreach for grants and to really go into these partnerships with these counties when economic development services were at risk. So currently, we have, we serve in that role with myself and my colleagues in four of the six counties that we cover. This county, there's currently, obviously, as you know, not an agreement in place, and we're working with our partners in Iasko County. So it's made sense over the years, so, you know, we're very lucky to have Northern Transformation, which really was developed as a funding mechanism and really to provide those additional services. So that's kind of like a little recap of where we're at as far as the agreement. Back in December, I believe it was the last meeting of the year, the EDC did come before the Board of Commissioners. We had been a recipient for some American Rescue Plan money to administer several different grant programs throughout the county. So we did have some funding reallocated for general EDC operations to hopefully carry us through. Right now, this first quarter, I'm doing very limited economic development work because there isn't an agreement in place. And so we, as an EDC board, are redeveloping like what our strategies are to, you know, continue on beyond what funding has been set aside. So I'll let you kind of take it from there. Is that a good recap of kind of where we were and where we're at?
Exactly. I want to talk a little bit first about what economic development is. Economic development is workforce development first, business attraction and business retention. And you can see from Brenda's report that she does a fine job of workforce development, also with business retention and attraction. One of the things that we as an economic development organization or committee do is try to set the table in Roscommon County to attract business and also to retain business. One of the things you'll notice, and I, you know, I lived for a long time in Prudenville, and that M-55 corridor, two, three years ago, we had empty, almost every other building seemed like it was an empty building. You drive by that corridor now, and you can see there are very few empty buildings. So that's, that's an indication that economic development in Roscommon County is working. We are setting the table for businesses to be successful in Roscommon County. We're not a manufacturing county, we are a tourism county. So our focus is on tourism, to bring more people in, to staff the businesses that are tourism-related and so forth. So it's very important, I think, that we continue to maintain that relationship with Michigan Works because that is what they do. Workforce development is what they do. Just a little aside, our executive committee, all of us have some experience in economic development. Rich is on a lot of the economic development boards in his area, Teresa is the head of the Tourism Bureau, and I worked 22 years in economic development. I started with Middle Michigan Development Corporation and worked there for essentially 22 years until I was traded to Michigan Works. Actually, it was a relationship between MMDC and Michigan Works, and I worked in the same position Brenda is in, in Clare County. I can't tell you from pure economic development to economic development and workforce development, how very important it is to keep the two of them together. That, and in this day and time, that is exactly what businesses need, is how do we get employees? How do we retain employees? How do we train our employees? That's what Michigan Works does. So to go, just to get into the MOU, the memorandum of understanding, we are asking that, this is an understanding between Michigan Works and the Economic Development Committee. We are just asking your blessing to enter into that MOU once again. When funding was discontinued to the EDC, it also discontinued the MOU. And we are re-initiating, I guess, if that's a word, that memorandum of understanding to work, our board, our EDC board, to work with Michigan Works and continue the good work that Brenda has been doing, and frankly, that our whole board has been doing. I would entertain any questions that you might have.
As a member of the economic development, I'm supportive of the MOU.
Am I.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we will make sure that we get a resolution drafted.
Yeah, sounds good.
On the commissioners' meeting, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich, thanks, Teresa.
Enjoy your day. Number three, Treasures Report, ERN Report, Rebecca.
Okay, I think what I'm going to do first is, because we have three new, you have this in your packet, and I'm going to go over this with you so you can understand. Okay, so quarterly, I give a report to the commissioners showing how all of our banks and our general ledger balance, all right? So if you look at the first page, which is this one, you'll see the three months, and the first line, it says "impressed cash," that's actually everybody's petty cash, that's the amount that's spread through all of the courts and this building side, the county building side, okay? Then we have general checking account, you'll always see 400 in there because that's what Chase agreed with me, if I keep it there, they won't charge any fees. And before I did this, it was about $5,000 to $6,000 a year. So, all right. So then the next line, then we start getting into all the accounts that I have with the different banks, Chase, Huntington, and the credit union. And then, as you go down, you'll see little notations, void's not given until 12/1, so I carry that in November as a reconciling item. And then you'll see the rest of the investments. There's MyLift and MBIA class, and that's where we're making a lot of money right now. For the last approximately six months, we've been getting really good interest. As you can see, in December, ended up being $52,2482, which is pretty good because we hadn't seen that in years. When you get done with the investment side, you'll go down to certificates of deposit at the very bottom, and we have two that are connected to the landfill. And the DNR in the state of Michigan tells me that I have to keep $305,521,04 in an account just in case there's a disaster with the closed landfill. And then another $10,000, and both of those just roll over year after year. The private bank, the $305,521, they send me a check every month for the interest, and that goes right into the general fund. Now, if you look at these papers, and there should be two, and then two going horizontal and one vertical, if you look at the top, it says, the first one will say October 1st to October 31st. Then if you go all the way down to the bottom, you'll see this little thing right here. Yeah, okay. So that's what the general ledger says, and then we have credit cards. Now, the county has over 11 different credit card companies that pay in to us from the courts, clerk's office, registered deeds and taxes. And every month, those have to be reconciled to the penny. So that's what these adjustments are down here, says credit card. It's the first one, it's this right here. Those are, yep, see it right there? Those are credit cards that actually were posted to the general ledger, but they're towards the end of the month, and so the money doesn't get to us until the following month.
We get a fee off that, correct?
We what?
You get a fee on that, correct?
A fee?
In other words?
The person gets charged the fee.
Right.
We don't get a fee, we get the whole amount.
Okay.
But there are credit cards, like I said, if they're used towards the end of the month, the money won't get to us until the following month. So that's what these numbers are, you'll see a minus $5,31274, and that was the amount of credit cards from all the departments that didn't hit the bank in October. And then you'll see credit card company money, $8,000, that's the tax payment, tax payments. So then, if you look at, it says grand total, and if you look at that grand total and then pull this up, which is the banks, you'll see that that matches exactly what the general ledger says and what's in the bank. I also want to hit on, does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. I also want to touch on PREs. Our PRE specialist has been working very hard and has, let's see, we've been to court probably eight times in the last three months, and we've only lost one. So she is finding a lot of these PREs that people, either out of ignorance or on purpose, are trying to cheat the system. Also, we had our show, I had my show cause hearing last week, and we were able to sign up three more people on payment plans, and you guys don't know about those either, so I'll explain that. We had, I went to the judge when I first came here, I went to the judge, and between the judge and I, we made a payment agreement, and this is by law, we can do this, we can extend the foreclosure process by one year. I work up a payment agreement, a legal document, they sign it, I sign it, and they have to pay a monthly amount. And when they do that, then by the end of the year, they'll have all their taxes paid up and they won't be foreclosed. So we probably have about, I'll say about 50 of those right now, okay? And then yesterday was supposed to be my hearing with the judge to foreclose, and that had to be postponed since we were closed, so I'm not sure. So I'm not sure how that's going to go, and I'll report that, I guess, later on. Does anybody have any questions thus far? Okay, well, my office is always open if you want to come in and chat about something. Please feel free to come. Jody, she comes and asks things, but I do want you to know that my job entails finding every mistake that every department makes every month and correcting it. It usually takes me a week, a week to seven days, to balance out all these accounts, find everybody's mistakes, correct all the mistakes, and then you see the end product here. Okay, if you have any questions, like I said, my office is always open.
Your office does a great job, thank you.
I have a great staff.
Any questions? That'll be it, it's 10:00 PM, or 10:00 AM, excuse me.
Oh, I have some questions. I asked the parliamentarian, I sent her an email, I know she was off yesterday, so she didn't get a chance to get back to me. But when do we have the opportunity, is it during the work session, we can bring things up?
No. It'd be new business. Yeah, new business, old business.
Okay, that's when we can bring all that.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Roll call, please. Here.
Ostergren.
Here.
Wolfson.
Milburn.
Here.
Censor.
Approval of the agenda.
Move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. Yeah, agenda. Roll call, please.
Ostergren.
Here.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson. Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Approval of the minutes for 111 of 23, 125 of 23, and 127 of 23, special meeting. Rex, do you want to?
Yeah, I believe there's an error in January 25th. I don't, number two. I think at that time, we appointed Jody to the Airport Advisory Committee.
Yep, for two years.
But in the minutes, it reads, it doesn't read airport. Actually, the way it reads is, we're pointing it to the Station Administrator Controller.
Okay, what that correction made, is there any other corrections? I would take a motion? Or accept a motion? I'll second it. Clerk, can you call, roll, please?
Censor.
Yes.
Ostergren. Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson. Motion carried.
Class A claims.
Move to approve class A bills in the amount of $77,502.29.
I'll make that motion. Call, roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson. Motion carried.
Total claims and accounts.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $87,372.95.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second? Clerk, can you please call, roll?
Ostergren.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number seven, public comment. Is there anybody, yes, sir, want to come up? Please turn the mic on, where's Chiles Green in Statehood?
Good morning, I'm Rich Castle, I'm the Community Affairs Manager at Consumers Energy. Wanted to take this time, kind of do a purpose role today, obviously here with the EDC, but wanted to introduce myself to the new Board of Commissioners. So, obviously, I've worked with David and Mark in the past, and I just wanted to extend the same opportunity to work with, you know, the new members moving forward. I'm based out of our Towess office, I cover eight counties here in northeast Michigan, so my region is basically from Towess over here to Houghton Lake, up to Frederick, up to Atlanta, and then over to Alpena. So heavily involved in the region, but heavily involved here in Roscommon County. The Vice Chair of the Roscommon County United Way, as well as the Vice Chair for the Economic Development Committee as well. I think moving forward, you know, my role in helping you do your job, and, you know, making your job easier, is I try to include you in notifications regarding any planned outages that we have, any tree trimming work that we have, that may become valuable, because as you're working with your constituents in your communities, you know, if they have questions, they have issues, at least you've heard it from Consumers Energy on what's going on, and you can always reach out to me if you have any questions or issues with that. That same information also goes to the township supervisors, so at least everyone's in the loop on what's going on. Other than that, just kind of wanted to introduce myself, let you know that I look forward to working with all of you, and if you got any questions, it's an open door policy with me, so free to answer any quick questions if you have any. All right, thank you much.
Chase Shupke, can I ask questions, my first one I've ever been at? Yeah, so I was wondering why you guys pursued Spicer Group or the control structure? Did you solicit other proposals from other engineering firms?
Oh, we have used Spicer's, yes.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if it would be in the best interest to get multiple proposals from different companies before choosing one engineering firm.
Mr. Shupke, which specific, because they're all over the place.
Yeah, no, the Higgins Lake one.
The current motion?
Yes.
Okay, well, you guys haven't decided that yet, so I think, yeah, they definitely have room for discussion.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would, personally, I have experience in that field, and I would recommend trying a new off-out of Cadillac, also should be considered, you know, it doesn't hurt to get a proposal.
Free lead, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you the gentleman that also applied for the motion?
I am.
Wonderful, okay, I'm Jody.
Is there anybody out there? Okay, we'll move to number eight. Administrator Controller Report.
Okay, quick lawsuit update for everyone, the current versus Roscommon County Treasurer, we're still awaiting decisions on the argument against class certification. Chilversus Roscommon County has no change. Ostergan versus Schneider in Roscommon is actually in the BO Court of Appeals nowish, today. The Ostergan versus Schneider et al., the offer to stipulate to judgment was accepted, so that one, as long as it's accepted through the courts, will be closed. Ostergan et al. versus Melvin has no change. The opiate suit, we are expecting to receive our initial funds, which is about $31,000 by June of 2023. Ostergan versus Board of Canvassers, the Supreme Court denied application for appeal. Special Assessment Projects, Houghton Lake, the engineers are designing the questionnaire to distribute regarding desired lake levels and uses and concerns. Obviously, because there's a Special Assessment District created, that will be where those questionnaires are going to, and some additional regions as well, and then they will schedule outreach meetings. Lake St. Helen, there is a stakeholder meeting scheduled on Zoom at 1:30 PM on February 13th. Commissioner Wolfson, I can get you that link as soon as they give it to me, so I know you want to attend as well. And that is to get everybody up to speed, to answer questions from Ritzville Township, their lake associations, and get that information, exactly the same plan and process that was used on Houghton Lake. On Higgins Lake, still very, very early stages. They are working to create a draft parcel map of the area that would be targeted for public survey. The thing with Higgins Lake is it's so old and it's so widespread, it's going to take forever to really understand where and who has certain accesses. So they're just basically going to start off with a basic public survey. Hey, let us know if you have dedicated lake access. I don't think you'll see that until probably the summer or late spring, just because you do want to make sure that you've got as many people and information as you can get forward on that. Quick legislation update, this isn't actually any change to any type of rules or bills. It's just information that I think you, as the Board of Commissioners, are aware of, but I just want to bring to light, so you're, so you have that out there. So there was data collection and review regarding populations by county that are considered to be the most vulnerable for substance abuse. That information has been finalized and released through MDHHS. Roscommon County actually ranks 15th highest of 83 counties in regards to vulnerable populations for drug abuse. I'm sure that my sheriff's deputies could attain to that. There are two main factors for this. The first is the high opiate prescription rate that we do have in our county. A lot of that, we are in what they consider to be a rust belt, so we do have a lot of people that are on disability that retire to this area. The second factor is social vulnerability, which talks about access to basic needs and access to jobs, sustaining jobs, and the economic climate of the county itself. So that is actually available on the MDHHS website, so I can send a link if anybody is interested. Spent a little bit of time with our new representative from MMRMA, discussing the renewal update. We are anticipating a 12% increase over last year due to increased losses. We did budget for a 15% increase in 2023, so we will be covered for that. The courthouse security meeting, and I'll give you a quick update on this, this is actually required by the State Court Administration Association to scale. Basically, review is a review of any incidents and needs and/or changes that obtains with that. Obviously, the chief judge is in charge of security for the courthouse in and of itself. But this, just way we're involved as far as what needs may be occurring, certainly there are things that occur in individual courts that not everyone is aware of that might change procedures and protocols as well. We did have a meeting, I did attend a meeting with our EDC Executive Board, in which they were really looking to quantify the money they have in the bank to move forward, looking to define themselves separate from the county, while retaining that county support. I think they'll do a good job, I'm kind of excited by you guys. I did a three-hour webinar with the Cannabis Regulatory Agency to try to make sure that I understood, on behalf of the county, the rules, regulations, and processes for the townships, counties, municipalities in regards to all of these changing guidelines that have been put out in the last couple of years since that passed on the ballot itself. Pretty interesting, but a little boring at times, so at least I know something. 1099s and W2s were sent out on January 31st. We have been working together, I've been working to gather information for Commissioner Ostergan from our departments regarding employee eligibility for cash and lieu. Clerk Stevenson is being very helpful, thank you, and is trying to work with the current recycling committee to determine how maybe they can be retained by the board, and what maybe their purpose and restructuring would look like, and I do believe there are a couple members that will be speaking later as well, asking the same questions. And then finally, just kind of an FYI, and I will get Bill in touch with the gentleman, the Surfside Shores Association is planning to begin work on their park, which amounts up to the lake level control structure. It sounds like they may actually move forward with a survey, which then we would get a copy of if that's necessary, but I will put Bill in touch with him so that they can coordinate that information. Was it done already? Okay. Perfect, okay, that's it.
Any questions for Joe?
Mr. Chair. I cannot overemphasize how important household hazardous wastes to the county. It's imperative that we continue this program. This is probably one of the most important programs that we need to continue. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yes.
Yes, with regards to the SAD on Higgins Lake, and searching out the correct parcels that are going to be affected, just like they had to do on Houghton Lake, isn't that all done through the registered deeds? Seeing if someone has deeded lake access, and/or, it's pretty simple if it's, you know, someone on lakefront, that's pretty, that's pretty simple to derive, but, because I know there's a lot of associations that have 50 members, 100 members in them that all have deeded lake access, isn't that easy? Not that difficult, I would think, through the registered deeds, or, you know, is it going to take weeks, months, hour, how many hours would anyone, you know, could you expect to take with that? Because Houghton Lake has twice as, you know, twice as much, you know, lakefront.
What exactly is your question?
My question is, she said it was going to take an enormous amount of time, because it's so complicated.
Or what?
Develop the Special Assessment District, the parcels that are going to be involved in this. Is that what you said, Jody?
Yes, I said it would probably be late spring or early summer.
When you would start, but it would take an enormous amount of time. That's what I'm concerned about, is this going to take years, months? That's my question, I guess, because I don't see it as being that difficult of a task, determining who has lake access and who has lakefront property.
Well, I can tell you, as the register of deeds, I can tell you that no one in that office does that. Somebody else is doing the searching through our records. So how long it takes them to search through the records to find that information, we can't speak to that.
Who we assigned to do that so far?
We don't assign it. Spice and not Spicer's, yeah, and Stacy.
Okay, so it's done, okay with them, and they have said that it's going to take?
Well, you have.
I'm just curious, I'm not trying to be.
Yeah, I can ask them if they can give a better estimate of time for you.
Okay.
Currently, obviously, they're working on three, and Lake St. Helen is certainly priority of this board, because it is in the state of disrepair.
Yeah.
That is the most, so they have focused, you know, when you've only got four people working on one task, so they'll be parceling it out. But yes, to register deeds, but what they learned through Houghton Lake and through, obviously, this is the same group that worked on the three lakes downstate, is deeded access doesn't always transfer over from deed to deed. So you get to those neighbors that you've had that say, well, this neighborhood back here has had, you know, the ability to hoist off since 1970. So then you have to dig back three more sets, and people are human. So coming from deed to deed to deed, when they sell, that doesn't always transfer over in the actual document itself, so sometimes they've got to search back. So that's where you use the word of mouth to make sure that you're getting every parcel that people may be aware of, and then you can do that deep dive into them.
Yeah, because there's something, I can't remember the exact terminology, but by, just by using it for a certain period of time, you are automatically granted it also. Yeah, because there's something, I, I can't remember the exact terminology, but by just by using it for a certain period of time, you are automatically granted it also, it's, I can't remember the, uh, uh, I can't remember the name, but it, but.
But I will, I will reach out to, uh, Spicer's and ask them if they can give me a better estimate of time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, correspondence, a Segal County, A. B is Northeast Michigan Council of Government, C is Lake Township Supervisor. D is Michigan Association of Counties, and E is M S U extension. Monthly department reports, uh, A, Ross Common County Animal Shelter. That's all for monthly department reports. Number eleven, visitors, uh, Jack, uh, Scott, Randy, do you want to come up here also?
This green is good.
Yes, green is good.
Yeah. Uh, we're here again in reference to the Household Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee. Our committee is really working hard on being able to keep that going. Nightmare I had last night was that we couldn't keep it going, and we had a little over a thousand people participate for the last couple of years. And I thought about the Styrofoam egg cartons, where are you going to go with it if we can't recycle? They're going to throw it in the garbage. Then it goes into the landfill. What did you learn last month about Styrofoam in landfill? Scientists haven't proven or given an exact time, but they said it'd be at least a thousand years before that Styrofoam would disintegrate. We gotta keep this committee open, that's what we want. Um, let's see, we, uh, Jody's working on one thing, and that was, uh, see if a girl could write a grant. Get us our money so we can. Oh, is she here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that when we talked, yeah. And, uh, so, you know, that's one, one thing that we're hoped to do. So we have a meeting today at noon, ours, the recycling committee, and one thing I'd like you people, your committee, to do, and that is Tim is gone, and so we don't have him anymore on a committee. We've always had a representative from the board. So if you would get together sometime and sign someone who'd like to get involved in that, uh, we'd appreciate that being done also.
And when do you meet?
Uh, second Wednesday of every month, noon, right over here in the conference room.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, what else is I got?
Rex just volunteered.
Okay, good, thanks, we know Rex. We got a meeting today at noon, Rex, if you're free. Let's see, what else, that's, that's the main thing, we gotta, you know, we gotta come up with that, that money to keep that going. And I know what problems you've had, you know, with your budget, uh, but we're going to keep harping at you. Anyway, see if you can't come up with it. Any questions?
Just, just, just a quick, when this, how much, we were talking right around twenty grand, are we, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, I hate to ask a question, I don't know the answer, but it's right around twenty grand, right? Okay. I think it's just important for the public to know and for the record how much you're looking for.
Yeah, because we, the taxpayers, uh, each township is assessed a certain amount per head, and that goes to the recycling, and that's where the bulk of the money comes from as far as paying our bills, because the oh, the household hazardous waste truck, that cost around thirty-two thousand each time they come, which is twice a year. And then the appliances, all TVs, all the appliances, that comes to about a thousand a year, uh, and, and the tires cost us a little bit, but not much. Uh, we've had some discussion about, uh, asking, putting up a donation bucket and ask for donation from the people who do participate. But again, they're already paying, so whether that would ever get us to twenty thousand, not sure, but it's some things that we're considering.
And a big shout out to Mr. Jaglo for hanging around until like nine o'clock at night on Thursday in Esther County.
Yeah.
That's important to us, we don't want to see it all in the woods, and as chairman of the Conservation District, we would like to see it keep going, we're trying to put all our budget we can into it to make sure it still happens, so.
Appreciate you, to your due diligence, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
So I've been, I spoke with Barb last week to get some clarification on all of this because of after the last time when I, when you guys were here. And so we need to get some clarification. And according to my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but household hazardous waste is actually run by the Conservation District. So it's not the county recycling committee itself that runs it. And according to Barb, about three thousand dollars of the, was it twenty-eight thousand that we allocated?
Mm-hmm.
Of the twenty-eight thousand that was allocated by the county was utilized for advertising and educational for household hazardous waste. And twenty thousand of that was utilized for the office person for recycling. Um, and then I forgot what the other couple thousand was, but I made notes from her emails. So that's where her and I had a really good discussion, and I don't remember if she was able to make it to your Conservation District meeting last Wednesday or not.
Yes, she did.
Um, but then I, I planned to be at your meeting today to try to get some, get some more direction and some information from you guys, because we need to be able to tell them, you know, what was the purpose when the recycling committee was established? So, and is it, is it household hazardous waste? Or is it establishing recycling programs throughout the county? Because I know a lot of the individual townships, they each one sets up their own ability for recycling within their jurisdiction, but I think we have a lot of, uh, information we've got to get straightened out, or details we've got to get straightened out, so that you guys have a clear definition of what your role is, and if you're, if we still need it, because like, it was my understanding too, that the Solid Waste Plan Committee was still meeting, even though they didn't need to be meeting. So this was brought up to you last month, and we need to kind of get it going or get some discussion on it. But I did ask Barb if it would be okay if we brought it up on the March eighth meeting, because I will not be at the next meeting. But I'm glad that we have a commissioner now on there, because that was one of my other concerns, because it wasn't on the committee list. Have somebody on there, so if it is something that's continued, I think that you guys would appreciate having a somebody from there, so that was all I had.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number twelve, unfinished new business. I know Rex.
Um, on February third, I, David Russo, and Bill Sullivan from Lincoln's made an inspection on Higgins Lake Dam. And it was found that scouring in the screen, stream bed has occurred over the years. It appears to extend from below the dam and out into the lake itself, quite an area. It, it appears to be about six inches or so deep. I believe the original permit called for the, that level to be at the stream bed level, which is now lower than the stream bed level. And I think it's a deficit that's happening that we're going to have to deal with.
Thank you. Uh, remind notes. Uh, Eric, you asked for a motion to set up a meeting with Eagle to discuss a temporary repair of Higgins Lake.
Uh, yes, I want that, uh, I, I want to amend my motion that I originally had today on Spicer's, I understand it's going to cost us money, yeah, that. I'd like to amend, uh, the motion that I originally filed for today. Uh, have that basically inserted into it to have, have a setup of meeting with Eagle.
Okay, uh, did you want the meeting with Eagle with all of our members, or do you want just two of us to meet?
Fine with me, I'd be fine.
Two members, or?
I would like to be part of it, of course, but, uh.
Okay, because I was going to do it with Rex, we can't have three.
I understand, so, yeah, we could, could we, uh, have them come in, I guess?
I could give them a call and I'll give them a call and see when.
Then I guess, you know, I, I hope you can appreciate my mistrust of Eagle.
Right, I.
So I would certainly like to have all five of us there, that'd be excellent.
Okay, let me give them a call and I'll, I'll see what they say, and I'll get back with you.
And I've got some issues on old business too, so.
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to screen off, uh, I, I understand that when the delegated authority was assigned to our controller was, is going to be a temporary assignment as the work required was not part of, uh, uh, our controllers' regular job duties, but she was asked to do so by the commissioners. Understand that as soon as the Special Assessment District for all the lakes uh, was established, the delegated authority of our lakes was either going to be turned back over to the respective commissioners or assigned to somebody else. Uh, what I wonder is what it's going to cost to farm this responsibility out, instead of having a commissioner handle our lakes, and how long it would take to establish special assessment districts, and I talked about that a little bit earlier. Uh, and when the delegated authority for managing our lakes will be returned back to the commissioners or assigned to a new entity, which I'd be in favor of, of course. Uh, I propose a, a motion outlining the arrangement, so we can make that at our next meeting, so it's in writing, and there's nothing, uh, uh, confusing or, or misunderstood.
Okay, right now, and I'm just speaking for myself, I would like to see when all the special assessment districts are formed, that, uh, we hire one person, if it's soil, not soil, erosion, uh, drink commissioner, or somebody, water control person.
Form a motion, pass it, so it's written record, I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Dave.
Yeah, and, uh, we could, we could draft something up after everything's done, because then we'll have the monies to do something like that when all the special assessment.
I, I think that's most aligning what is going to be done before the special assessment district is done, that, that's what I'm saying. In other words, in our next meeting, uh, it is never, it's all.
What I could do is put a draft together, and we could talk about it in our work session. And then that's the way it goes, and then after that, then two weeks later, it could be for a motion.
That, that'll be fine with me, I just want to make sure that everything is understood upfront, hey, this is what happened, this is the history, this is what we plan on doing, and this is what we're going to do when, you know, when the special assessment district is done.
Okay.
Well, this would be a plan of action.
Yeah.
In reading, so we have, everybody knows the direction we're going.
Yeah, we're going to go in, correct. Number thirteen, motions and resolutions. Number one.
Move to adopt Ross Common County Board of Commissioners rules as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Third call roll, please.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number two, and this one, Eric, this is what you're relating to, it could go dead, but it's on the motions, it has to be read.
Okay, uh, can I amend it?
Uh, it'd be better if the clerk read the motion, and it goes dead if there's no support.
Okay, can I then, uh, can I then amend it, Ms. Parliamentarian?
Not unless, no, you know, it's going to be this way or no way. Am I correct, Michelle?
I don't have a solid answer for you on that at the moment.
Oh, I haven't, Jody? They're both kind of right.
So I think after you make the, they can make the motion, and then the second. And then whenever you discuss it, that's when you can amend the motion, and then you can vote on it.
We have to vote, so.
Pass it before we approve it?
No, so, no, so basically what you do is you say, this motion goes, the current motion goes, then you have your discussion, you say, I think this should be amended, then somebody else says, great, I make a motion to amend the current motion. Then that gets approved, the amendment, then you go back, reread it with the amendment, it's passive.
But my question is, do you need to pass a motion to schedule a meeting? I don't know that you need to pass a motion to schedule a meeting. Oh, that's my only thought on that.
Okay. Would you like to read motion number two, please?
Move to retain the Spicer Group to inspect the lake level control structure located on Higgins Lake and make recommendations regarding its repair to restore the L L C S to its original operational condition as it existed in August of two thousand seven, per the original two thousand seven permit.
Discussion. Oh, okay. Is there a motion?
I thought we just read the motion.
I mean, uh.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
We read the motion, and then somebody has to make the motion.
To.
Motion to amend.
We're asking.
You can't.
We're reading the motion.
So, so moves.
Okay, is there support? Rex seconded, now it's discussion.
Yes, I think, uh, we need to amend it so, ever so slightly. Uh, I think that since we've talked about Spicer coming in, that would cost us money, which I understand we do not have the funds. Uh, I think we need to, uh, have that done, uh, after the special assessment district is developed, but I would also like to amend it to say that we immediately move contact Eagle to establish open communications and meet with them regarding the repair to restore the current L L C S to its original operational condition as it existed in August of two thousand seven, per the original permit. And that is my amendment.
Can you read that again slower, so we can write it down, please?
Move to contact Eagle and set up meeting with them before the board regarding the repair to restore the L L C S on Higgins Lake to its original. Slow me down if I'm going too fast.
Rest of it just.
No, I got more, too, its original condition, operational condition. It existed in August of two thousand seven per the original permit.
Okay, that's completely changing the motion from what you're trying to do, so you want to change this motion from retaining Spicer Group to making it about a meeting with Eagle.
Yeah, we, that's too much.
Be a different, it has to be, that would have to be a different motion.
Yes, and that's what I explained to you, let me get with the Eagle, uh, let me get with them, but we'll discuss it in our next meeting, and then we'll vote on it to bring Eagle in. What you're asking for is out of the zone right now.
Yes.
Perhaps we can simplify the wording of this sum. I'm not in favor of naming, uh, engineering firm at this point because it would lock us in, and they could just say, blank. because it would lock us in and they could just say blank check.
That's true. That's, that's, that's a great idea, Rex.
Eliminate the engineering firm.
The name of the engineering firm, yeah, just make it an engineering.
And basically what you're asking is what we already agreed to do.
Yeah.
As a plan of action.
Yeah, because we're, yeah, okay, we're going way out of our scope. What you want, Eric.
On the floor, so that motion needs to be voted on.
Yep.
You can vote that motion down. You don't have to pass it and.
Then we can move forward as a, as we discussed.
Mr. Chair, this is redundant.
Yeah, right.
Or I said, I don't think the motion is necessary because we're already moving toward this goal. It muddies the waters and it's confusing, in my opinion.
So let's vote on this motion right now, the way it's presented. Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Ostergren.
No.
Wolfson.
Oh.
Milburn.
Censor.
No.
Russo.
No.
Motion failed.
Just let the record reflect, I voted for the motion initially because I wanted to put it on the floor and I was not in favor of it, but it's important because usually those who make a motion vote for it. I think you missed the chair.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it on the work session in two weeks, Eric. Committee reports, Rex.
The other thing I have to announce is I met with the supervisor for Richfield Township the other day and he expressed great concern about the condition of St. Hellem Dam. And I kind of outlined to him our plan and he's very happy with that.
Thank you, Rex. Charlie?
Um, I had District Health and Michigan Works.
Work.
And MCA, here at the county building on Monday, District Health, um, with, uh, Commissioner Censor, Economic Development with the board that's behind us, and I met with the, the group to discuss the agenda.
Oh, and we had that meeting with, uh, Senator.
Many meetings, Mr. Chair.
Right here, when nine and ten news was.
Yeah, yeah, we met with Congressman Bergman, that's correct. Forgot about that.
Eric?
Yes, uh, we, we had an excellent meeting, which, uh, Mr. Chair, of course, you attended and a control Valentina with the all the department heads about payments in a fifty percent payments in lieu of insurance acceptance. Uh, the representative, I think it was Jennifer, uh, was there and she went through an awful lot. We, we have a sweet spot where we can get a certain number of employees to participate in the program to contribute a lot of money. Depending on the number we have, we, we can't have too few, we can't have too many. Uh, it would be good for the employees, it'd be good for the county, maybe, uh, you know, who knows what the estimate will be, but I suspect somewhere between twenty and a hundred grand, somewhere in there, we could save the county uh, on insurance payments, maybe more, but I, I, you know, I, we just don't know until we hear back from the department heads, they're going to be reporting back. Jody, are they going to be reporting back to you or what, what is going to happen?
Yes, so I actually, right after that meeting, sent out a list of employees, just had them do yes or no. Um, uh, the last two departments I was meeting for actually emailed in on Monday, but I was out sick. So I haven't had a chance to compile them all, but I'll have answers from everybody by the end of the day today.
Are there, is there, what is so far coming in? What, what is it looking like?
The ones that I've been waiting for are the largest ones. Um, so I haven't looked yet at the Sheriff's Department. That's got my biggest, nobody else has been a surprise to me. Um, but the Sheriff's Department has so many members that participate, but that's going to sway us. So we've got a chance.
Yeah, and I, I feel very encouraged about it. It's a way we're going to be able to save the county some money, I believe. And, uh, you know, when we're talking about twenty thousand dollars for handling, uh, you know, recycling, uh, you know, maybe the money can go towards that. I don't know how, how that's, how that's handled, but it's certainly be nice this upcoming year.
Thank you. I had a agenda meeting, spending a lot of time here on different assignments. Number fifteen, public comment. Anybody in the audience? Yes, sir. Please turn your mic on and stay.
Just wanted to take a chance to introduce myself. I'm Rob Pellerito. I'm the new district director for Senator Michelle Hoydinga. That's the thirty-six district which we sit in. So quite a large district, sixteen counties, eastern half of Manastee and up to Prescott and down to the northern three townships of Bay, Bay, uh, Bay County. So quite a bit of square miles I'll be covering. The senator, uh, has dedicated me to serve you, uh, in district. Uh, most other senate districts do not have a, a district, uh, person. She values, uh, your opinions, so please reach out to our office. I have my business cards I can pass out to you. Uh, reach out to us, uh, in Lansing, can reach out to me if you need me to come down for an event uh, for, for something going on, a meeting, we're, we're happy to, to, to serve you. So just, just wanted to say hi and, and I'm a former Osceola County Commissioner.
Okay.
So I understand what local government, what county government goes through. So you're near and dear to our hearts, so, uh, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? A German? Whoops, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
The only thing I wanted to do was make the board aware, um, previously I had let you know that the presidential primary election for twenty twenty-four would be March twelfth. Um, since that announcement, uh, our legislators were busy at work and so it looks as our presidential primary is going to be February twenty-seventh. So I'll keep posted.
Thank you.
How does that work into us having?
The filing deadline. So if you wanted to put something on that particular election, so you just need to be aware of the filing deadlines for that. So, um, it would be a couple of weeks earlier, so it could fall into November. So we just kind of have to keep a, an ear out as to what's going on with that election date and then when the filing deadline would be. But I, what I would suggest is that if you are considering it for that presidential primary election early in the year, have your, have your plan, have everything you're wording ready and such, um, before November.
Definitely.
Vote on it to have, you know, the board can do their approval of the wording to be filed with the clerk's office and have that done. So you're not trying to scramble to do it because you're also going to be going through budget, uh, bunch of stuff at that time of the year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else? Number sixteenth, a German.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.